Official meeting to order the regular council meeting here in the village of Woodline. Kirk, what's the official time?
Seven oh six.
Thank you. We'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a short invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father God, right now, we just want to pause and just thank you for allowing us to come out once again to do the business of the village of Woodline. Lord, we ask right now that you purge our hearts, our minds, clear of any bias. Lord, we ask that you clear our minds, that we do what is right for the village of Woodline. Lord, we are moving in the right direction and we just ask that you continue to strengthen us, that we continue to go up that hill. And right now, God, we just want to say again, thank you for what you do for all of us and all of our lives. In these blessings, we ask in thy son, Jesus' name and for his sake, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Poole.
Present.
Esther Bowie.
Here.
Rosemary Brown.
Here.
Cindy Chandler.
Present.
Pamela Fitzgerald.
Present.
Robert Lawson.
Present.
I need a motion to approve the regular council meeting from January thirty first, twenty twenty-three. With any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting on January thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting, which was our organizational meeting on January the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. With any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special council meeting, organizational meeting for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting from February the twentieth, twenty-first. No, I'm gonna stop right there. I need a special, a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting from February the twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a correction.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, my, my this on the second page, actually page three. It should say, um, confirm VIP would be concert, I think, and stage.
Are we at the bottom of the page? I'm just confirm VIP. What do I need to do?
Just, it says state. I think it's just a correction.
What is this supposed to be?
Stage.
Stage.
Okay. Good catch, ma'am. Very well. Are there any other corrections, deletions, additions to those minutes in front of us from that meeting? Having said again, I need a motion for approval.
I make a, I make a motion for approval of the special council meeting for February twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting from February twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third of twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion that we approve the special council meeting for February twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Appointment confirmation presentations. Mr. Kenneth Mathis. Will come forward? Mr. Kenneth, we. Mr. Williams. Before I move forward, why don't you introduce Mr. Mathis to council and to the public?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Just wanted to give a brief introduction. This is one of our star new hires, Mr. Kenneth Mathis. He was one of the, um, we brought in two full-timers, two part-timers, and this is one of our full-timers. Again, welcome to the family.
Very well. Mr. Mathis, thank you so much, and we welcome you here to the village of Woodline. But to make this a solid for you, how about raising that right hand for me, please? I, and please state your name.
Aye, Kenny Mathis.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
Bylaws.
Bylaws.
Ordinances and resolutions of the village of Woodline.
Ordinances and resolutions of the village of Woodline.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I.
Aye.
Further swear.
Further swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties as police officer.
And affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties as a, as a police officer.
Of the village of Woodline to the best of my skills and ability.
Of the village of Woodline to the best of my skills and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sworn to and tested this twenty-eighth day of February here in twenty twenty-three. The Honorable Brian K. Poole, mayor, congratulations, and we welcome you.
Next up, we have our second full-timer, another one of our rock star hires. And thank you, Mr. Greg Lee.
Very well. Well.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We're excited to get you in here. All right. Mr. Lee, if you'd be so kind enough to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name?
Aye, Gregory Lamont Lee.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws in the other state of Ohio.
Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
Bylaws.
Bylaws.
Ordinances and resolutions of the village of Woodline.
Ordinances and resolutions of the village of Woodline.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear and affirm.
I further swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Of the village of Woodline.
Of the village of Woodline.
To the best of my skills and ability.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sworn into and attested this twenty-eighth day of February. The Honorable Brian K. Poole, we welcome you to the village of Woodline. Mr. Tillman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Put some periods behind that mirror in between that.
What did I put to put?
Put some periods in between that, so I can follow them.
All right, very well. Mr. Tillman, you are being sworn in to be part of the village. Before I move forward. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Aaron Tillman as the council member that is filling the vacancy that was left behind Mr. Ki- Ms. Kiana Trebus' resignation of council. And this, the term will be fulfilled until December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
There are second on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. Mr. Tillman, if you'd be so kind enough to raise your right hand and I, and state your name, please.
I, Aaron L. Tillman.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution.
I do solemnly swear I uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
Bylaws.
Bylaws.
Ordinances and resolutions of the village of Woodline.
Ordinances and res- resolutions of the village of Woodline.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do also swear that I will faithfully.
I do also swear and faith, that I will be faithfully.
Perform the duties of, of the village, of the office of council member.
Perform the duties of office of council member.
And do all things in the best interest of the village of Woodline.
And do all things in the best interest of the village of Woodline.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sworn and attested to this twenty-eighth day of February, twenty twenty-three. The Honorable Brian K. Poole, mayor, welcome to our council, Mr. Tillman. Mr. Tillman.
Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of, to the members of council who believed in me, want to give, and saw the value. And I pledge to make sure that we'll be doing things in the best interest of.
Very well. You can take your seat, Mr. Tillman, on the bench. Mr. Turley, do you have a, an appointment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to read from an excerpt of a memo that I sent council earlier after we have conducted two interview sessions to find the next police chief for the village of Woodline. My appointment is Donna Robinson, and I will read the following. Donna Robinson has over thirty years of law enforcement experience, including commanding field operations, writing policy, investigating internal matters, and creating and promoting programs that foster community engagement. In addition to her advanced leadership skills, she possesses an extensive knowledge of the criminal justice system in Hamilton County. As Woodline's next police chief, Ms. Robinson will succeed by communicating effectively with police staff, village administration, and the council. As chief, she will continue our tradition of building positive relationships with Woodline's businesses and community partners. Her experience in patrol, crime prevention, and community engagement is a solid fit for our village. She also understands and exercises the recommendations in the final report of the President's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing, which states that police departments must build trust with their communities while ensuring their officers' safety and welfare. Complementing all that experience, Ms. Robinson has the formal training required to ensure she succeeds as our next chief. She's a graduate of the Southern Police Institute, the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy, and the Police Executive Leadership College. Ms. Robinson is also a member of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, commonly referred to as NOBLE. Her additional leadership training includes the Xavier University Public Sector Leadership Course, Greater Cincinnati Urban League African-American Leadership Development Program, and the Cincinnati USA Regional Chamber, WE, Lead Women Leadership Development Program. In closing, I would say that Donna Robinson is a highly regarded law enforcement executive who builds relationships, leads with integrity, and promotes accountability. She has the education and experience to develop our officers professionally while ensuring their health and welfare. Most importantly, she wants to serve the residents. Proof of the fact that she went through the process twice. She wants to serve the business owners and everyone who works and lives in our village. Consequently, I am proud to appoint Donna Robinson as police chief of the village of Woodline. And one thing that I'd like to point out is that a lot of executives go through the Southern Police Institute or the Federal Bureau of Investigations Training. She's completed both. So with that, I present her to the council for appointment.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do see in this audience today, as I came out, I, I see some faces that I would take, and I'm hoping that I'm speaking correctly, that is here for such support. Has anybody signed up for, to speak tonight?
Yes, we have two. Sherwin Anderson, I can challenge you, and then Jordan.
Okay, one moment. Bu- before I move, before I move any, uh, I, I just want to, I kinda got ahead of myself. Just bear with me here. As we're talking about the police chief appointment, is anyone here to speak on behalf of her appointment tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, would you please sign the, uh, check with the clerk? Sir?
Good evening, council.
Please step forward and, and for council, and just for the record, please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Deion Mack, address, Pretenders, Chicago, Ohio, four five two four. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm here on, I'm here as a now twenty-five-year member in law enforcement of twenty-one years, city of Cincinnati, with a variety of assignments. Most importantly, I was tasked with helping to restructure and redevelop over the Ryan Corridor. In addition to that, I also worked for four years, prosecutor's office, graduate of the University of Cincinnati. Most of the same assignments that you stated in terms of leadership development, I have been through as well. I'm here to speak on behalf of Donna Robinson. I want to tell you that I believe that this is a true challenge that you're getting in a police chief. Someone who is not only there for the officers, but also there for those in the community, whether it is the public sector, whether it is the business sector. I just want to come in and tell you that in, on the very last day of Black History Month, you are going to have someone who is the first African-American police chief that I know of in this area, first African-American female police chief that I know in this area. And I am asking you to vote.
Thank you.
Will we see you, ma'am?
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Michael Kiersten. I'm a retired, uh, police officer. I started out with the city of Cincinnati, did nearly forty years with them. I left the rank of Assistant Chief of Police, interim chief of police for a short time. And then I went to the University of Cincinnati as the Director of Public Safety and the Chief of Police. I left there in twenty fourteen, and since then, I've been a public safety consultant across the country, from Florida to Minnesota, on a lot of hot-button issues. As a public safety consultant, I can't really tell you what I've done, but I assure you, the most interesting and high-profile cases involving, say, Mr. Attorney Crump, I've been on that team. So I've been around a, a while. I've also been the president of the Sentinel Police Association, which is the Black Police Office Association in Cincinnati, for many years. Then subsequent to that, I was the president of NOBLE, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, for many years. Uh, and just recently, uh, gave that title up to sort of spend more time with my grandkid. Uh, but in that role, in my later years, I spent mostly as a mentor and a confidant to help aspiring police chiefs across the country. And there are a number of them that I've worked with, uh, from universities to municipal governments. And I'm proud of that accomplishment. I'm also proud to be here on behalf of Donna Robinson. She is a technical master. She knows the technical part of being a police chief for a city. She knows those core values that impact morale, chain of command, budgeting, and your organizational structure, as well as staffing and other things. She is grounded in those things to be a successful police chief and working in a city where money's tight, money's difficult. And so you need someone that's accomplishing it. So I'm confident to stand before you with all of my credentials and say, you'll be making a great, great choice on a number of levels to select Donna Robinson as your next police chief.
Thank you, Mr. Kiersten.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you tonight. I, like so many of my previous colleagues here, I am here also in support of the appointment of Donna Robinson. I've had the privilege to serve in law enforcement for nearly thirty-five years here in the greater Cincinnati area. Almost thirty-four years with the Cincinnati Police Department, where I served the past six and a half years as the police chief. And I am currently the police chief and director of safety at the University of Cincinnati, uh, which, which I'm very proud of. I also had the privilege of having Lieutenant Robinson on my staff during my time with the Cincinnati Police Department. I, so much so that I appointed her as my public information officer. I had so much confidence and trust in Lieutenant Robinson that I wanted her to be the voice of the Cincinnati Police Department when I was not available. She served in that capacity with glaring, glaring expertise. Being a part of someone who has had the opportunity to help invest in her, to see her blossom, being a leader in law enforcement in this region, I'm very confident that Donna is ready to step into that role of the executive leadership in law enforcement in the greater Cincinnati area. Being a lifelong resident of the greater Cincinnati, Cincinnati area, I know she is well-suited to take her place in that role. She has big footsteps to follow. As I so much congratulate, and I am so proud of the new council member, retired chief Tillman, I think that she is very well positioned to lead this beautiful village of Woodline. And with that, I just want to leave you all with my glaring and heartfelt recommendation for Donna Robinson to be the next police chief in the village of Woodline. Thank you so much for hearing us out.
Very well. Thank you.
I want to tell you that you are a local hero.
Well, that means a lot. I certainly appreciate that.
I don't, can't give you anything but.
Well, I, I will leave with that caveat. I am privileged and honored to be the first homegrown African-American police chief for the city of Cincinnati. It means something. It means something to have leaders in this profession that is so challenging. Chief Tillman, Chief Robinson has come up through the ranks here. She has over thirty years invested in law enforcement in this region. I believe she is fully ready to assume that role. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Mack?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
My name is Martin Mack. I am a retired Cincinnati Assistant Police Chief, and where I worked with the city for thirty-three years. And I'm currently the manager of public safety for UC Health at the Daniel Drake Center. And just wanted to come and kind of talk a little bit about Donna, who is, um, you know, an amazing person. And I think very qualified to be the next police chief of the village of Woodline. I am currently serving as the president of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, Southern Ohio Chapter of NOBLE. Donna is serving as our vice president. And so when you hear the others talk about her community engagement and other things that she does, her leadership, um, you know, she has done an amazing job, not only for our chapter over the years, but continues to do so particularly in the community. I think that would be something that, you know, the village would be amazed at her just desire and willingness to actually engage with people, the businesses, and as others said, throughout the community. And she's done that throughout her career. So not only is she highly qualified, you know, she's well-trained, a woman of color, and a woman of God, who I think has put, um, you know, the community and everything ahead of anything of, before herself. And I, I think that is something that will serve not only the village of Woodline, but the whole greater Cincinnati, Hamilton County law enforcement community. And I just, um, you know, recommend her to you and, um, you know, just wish, wish that, um, you know, she's able to, you know, serve you guys in that capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Clerk.
Um, we have two more we have, uh, challenge you, and Mr. Kenneth Jordan.
Just give me a minute. We need to take the action on the appointment. Is your?
Say, take action.
On the appointment? Uh-huh, yes. All right, very well. I need a motion to appoint Donna Robinson as our police chief here in the village of Woodline. Again, I'm asking for a motion to appoint Ms. Robinson as the police chief here in the village of Woodline. No motion on the floor? So moved. Next on your agenda?
We have Sherwin Anderson, a child called Challenge.
Come forward, please. Gentlemen, how are we tonight?
Fantastic.
Good.
Greetings, council. And I also celebrate the village of, uh, beautiful Woodline, because I just moved here for a, I've been here for a year now, and I absolutely love it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
I'm, I'm new, I'm still looking for a place, so if anybody knows.
We got somewhere for you to go. Go find it tonight. No worries.
Yes. Fantastic. But I just want to read this to you guys real quick. I'm partially blinded one eye, so if I'm holding it up to me like this, you understand why.
Take your time, take your time.
Well, greetings. Challenge you, um, Ohio Community School is a nonprofit organization based in Cincinnati, Ohio. The current mission of Challenge You, Ohio, is to create a partnership with the Woodline Village Community to graduate adolescents that are not currently enrolled in school.
Village community to graduate adolescents that are not currently enrolled in school. Challenge You's desire is to have a satellite location in the community to provide access to students within close range. Thus, joining with the Woodline Recreation Center through collaboration with Challenge You, the WRC will assist in shaping the minds and future of the Utes in Woodline Village. The Challenge You Summer Program is the first opportunity for students engaging, engagement and participation. The program would serve as a transition period for the future students, providing them with a strategic timeframe to be introduced and become acclaimed to a new academic environment. Our vision for Challenge You's Summer Program is to provide an outlet for Utes of the Woodline Area teenagers. As the program would run for four to six weeks, operating for four to five hours a day, and serving a population of thirty to forty students. The formal satellite, the formal academic school year will start two weeks after the conclusion of the summer program. The summer program and formal academic school program will be provided at the cost to families whose children will be, will be provided for free at cost to family whose children will be in attendance. The program will be, will be fully funded by Challenge You. Right now, the graduation rate, kids are falling, dropping out of school at a high rate right now. So our purpose is really to really help some of these young men and women get their, help them graduate and graduate through remote learning.
How you doing? My name's Kyle Pope, Woodline area. I am the program, program director. Our motto is very simple. We, we build rapport with students that may have winter's break, and we pair them with case management. So it's not just, it's a hybrid system. So we meet the kids with that. Each kid has an individual grad plan, and the increased case management is based on that child's needs. So whether you need to be at home, what we need from the Woodline Village is a satellite safe place for kids that their home environment is their school area.
I have a real quick question. When you talk about case manager, are these kids, is there a licensed therapist involved to write a type of treatment plan? And then the case manager follows?
We have a school counselor, we have a special ed department, we have a case manager. So each level of need is at each, you know what I'm saying? So they need a school counselor, we have that. If it's just case management, small barriers, that's what the graduation coach is, what the case manager is for. If it's escalated, then we, like I said, with the child's needs.
Okay. Ms. Boyd had a question.
I've met with this group, everybody, I met with these gentlemen, went home with Paula and the village manager, and I don't know, I see anybody else who was in there. But this is really a great thing. We see these kids out here, we wake up every morning, children are killing children. And one of the biggest links, other than the family, are the schools. They've been let down, they've been let down by the schools. The more that you pull these children in and you show them success, we can stop all this killing in the streets. So it's a beautiful program. And it is, it follows, you are an educator now, so it follows all of the guidelines by the Ohio Department.
I want to make sure that, one of the things that I want to stress before we leave, is that we want to start, this is going to be a partnership. This is a partnership with the schools, with the Princeton School System, with the schools in the area. This is not us trying to steal kids from the school. These are kids that are, are dropping out of school, you know, and we want to help them continue their education in a, in a different way.
What's our target audience, age-wise?
Age-wise, so currently, we are high school ages fourteen to twenty-one. The goal is, after we get our report card and we build our relationships, again, we want to start small, so we're effective. So once we do that part, we plan to do K through, K through twelve.
So ODE gives you a report card on your program?
Yeah, on everything. So graduation rate, so, because we're under the Ohio education system, so we have, we're governed by them. So all that information has to come.
And I apologize, I keep looking over at Ms. Boyd, that's my mentor over there when it comes to education stuff, so that's why I keep looking over there at her. I apologize for that.
Another educator also. Cindy Chandler, you didn't get to meet another educator.
Hi. I'm well, how are you?
Ms. Bistio?
So will these kids, I heard you say Princeton City School District, so what other districts will these schools, these kids come from?
So currently, you know, we're not allowed to turn any children away. We have a state-wide license. But our purpose is Woodline Village, is the children here, that's if I'm being clear. But we're only taking thirty to forty kids, because that's all we can sustain, because we have a one to ten ratio.
So are these kids referred to your program? How do they get into your program?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
They're referred to the program.
From the current?
It can be from, it can be from the school, it can be from a parent.
Counselors.
Counselors. We, we're, like I said, it's a partnership, so we, we, the vision for us is that the kids who need us, they come to us. We really don't want to go looking. Do you understand what I'm saying? So we want everybody to be involved.
So, so how do the kids end up, I mean, how do you divide the kids up once they're down in the rec centers? Like, since you have this huge age group. When, I mean, I think of the rec centers, there's still other activities that's going on during the summer. There's summer camp, there's different things that people are coming in and out. So how do you keep this group?
Right. So we...
So we have it broken down into three different groups. So the way it works for me, in order to do, in order to help a kid, you have to occupy their minds. So for me, my job is to make sure that they have different activities. We're, we're trying to, the way we have it catered is lunchtime to three. So they're coming after lunch, making sure that they, we have a journal, they have to journal first, and then they have to go split up into different groups, whether it's outside, whether it's in the gym, or whether it's entertainment, or art. So they'll have an art, they have art, they have access to art, they have access to sports, and they'll have access to fitness.
So the goals for the summer is to bring them in, get them acclimated before the school year starts. Do you understand? So they're...
So they're going to be doing other things than education? Because I heard...
Right. Exactly. So they, they will do the education stuff, and then when the school year commits, they'll be used to coming in from that time to that time. There'll used to be the rotation from that time, but they also have the ability to work autonomously at home, because they, because they have the computer and everything that's provided by us.
The only reason I'm asking a lot of questions, because I see from, any, any kid that's over eighteen can drive, so they can be in and out as they want. If they're not satisfied with the program, and they're over eighteen, they can just go. You know what I mean? I'm thinking of the revolving door that could happen, possibly down there. I mean, you probably have programs that you've done before that, that you can show us your statistics, but that would be one of my concerns, that you've got a huge age group, some are legal, some are not, and you got this, and I'm sure you divided up inside, some are drivers, some are not. So just trying to understand. And I understand the high school piece, because you're talking about probably eighteen and over, the majority, but when you get into twenty-one, that's concerning to me.
Right. I understand. It's just, if I'm being fully transparent, we, we don't have control over that. As a, as a school, that's, so we can't, we can't, we can't, you understand, it's like, if I'm being honest. We can't, we cannot tell a kid that's underage.
Oh, I get that.
As a school, so it's, so, so we have to just...
So for me, it's the control piece under. I can, I understand what you're saying between fourteen and twenty-one, but I would like to understand the controls when we talk about the eighteen piece right there.
Control.
And a fourteen-year-old, that's what I would...
Yeah, each, each group will be guided by a counselor. No one will be running free in the gym. So when I say, so it's a one to ten ratio, so there's always somebody with, there's not, it's not, it's not free range.
And that's a low ratio.
But you can, but you can, I mean, you can leave.
I wanted to, oh, oh, go ahead. I wanted to say to you, I understand your concerns, but when you work with a group like this, believe it or not, you have, you might have that concern at the regular public school, but in a small group, you don't have that concern as much. For somebody who's spent ten years there, they, you, you don't have that concern as much as what you're worried about. And they're in a small group, in a ten to, ten to one ratio, it's a huge thing. It's really good. You have more control over them. In the schools, it's what, thirty to one?
Yeah, in the public schools, right. They have to have one.
Twenty-four to one.
Right. And again, it's, it's, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be lax, if I'm being honest. My eighteen-year-old, he may have to go to work, or she may have to go to work, or their kid might come with them sometimes. This is what Challenge You is, because our model is set up for the non-traditional. There's something, there's a reason why you're with us. You're not with us because you're a traditional student, but you have the desire to graduate. So our job is to do our best between case management, special ed, whatever, to remove as many barriers so that you can, so you can, and then after that, we're going to figure out what you want to do. You want to be a carpenter? Do you want to go to college? Whatever it is, we're going to support you through that, too. Post-graduation is our main thing. We get you that first part, and then, yes, ma'am?
Good.
I just wanted to ask the mayor and Madam Chair of Recreation, it sounds like this can be a conversation that can go on. I'm not stopping you here. I have a lot of questions as well, and I would like to see this move to maybe a recreation committee meeting, so that we can...
I was going to, I was going to suggest...
Ask more questions and get to the meat of it.
Whatever you guys need, word.
No worries.
That was our purpose to come.
Ms. Paula, your hand was...
Yeah, that was one of the suggestions I was going to make, that they come to, we have a rec commission meeting, I was going to call Crystal and see if you guys could come, not, you know, all of three of you, but maybe Sherwin and Pope could come to the meeting, actually tomorrow. I know it's kind of a... I need to call Crystal first to make sure. We need to talk to the commission team, just give them an idea of what they want to do. I know Pam, you had questions about the time. The twelve to, the twelve to three time was selected because after lunch, our fans go to the pool, or are out of the building, and we go to the back at three o'clock. So that interaction is minimal. That's not, that's only back and speaking as far as...
I actually was going to speak to you, because I wanted to have a recreation committee meeting, the first Tuesday in March. And I was going to ask that the commission come also.
Okay.
So if we could, if you can hold off on that phone call, and I'll get in touch with them, because I would like to have them do that.
Thank you.
Good.
I just have one question. For this meeting, is there anything particular from us that we would need, or that you guys would want us to bring?
I have a couple.
At this point, I, you know, right, I mean, do you have an additional?
I just want to see some, some numbers, some statistics.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
To maybe some of the programs that you've had in other cities or states or wherever, so I can get a feel of how successful you are going forward.
Good stuff. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for coming out. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
All right. Very well. Committee reports. Committee of the...
We have one more, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jordan!
How are you, Mayor?
I'm good. I apologize.
Commissioner. Kenneth Jordan, twelve thirty-one, Timberland Drive. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I'm here just as part of the Recreation Commission, and I'm interested in hearing more about you guys as well. I want to thank Ms. Sherman for taking time to meet with the commission. We had a couple of questions we thought we'd address to, to the council. One of them is advertisement of the rec center. And we asked Ms. Sherman about the possibility or opportunities to advertise banners, what have you, on Springfield Pike. And we were just curious, what, what is the policy, or is there a policy regarding promoting events at the rec center on Springfield Pike? Or, and/or Glendale, Milford?
Milford.
Yes, like other communities are doing.
Manager, I think I'm going to let you answer that question, just to make sure that we're talking about codified ordinances, if it's inside of that, anything.
So there are certain ordinances that deal with signage in the right-of-way. Most of them prohibit signs from just being posted. And the reason you want to do that is to keep signs from like, you know, "We buy cheap houses," those type of signs from, you know, littering up the right-of-way and making the village look cluttered.
I understand completely. What we are referring to are more along the line of banners that advertise it. Let's say the...
And banners and signage, they kind of fall under the same ordinance. So one idea that we did have is, as you know, in front of the fire station, there is the sign right now that currently is, does not work, right? We were thinking of maybe installing more signage in a better place that would do that invertment.
Is that electronic signage?
That electronic signage. That is correct.
Okay, that's great.
But we, the problem is, is we, if we allow, you know, even the village to put up those banners, well then, private entities will want to do the exact same thing, and then sooner or later, the village is overrun with banners for different purposes. But we can talk, you know, if you'd like to stop in, we can definitely talk with Mr. Leroy Williams. He's our code enforcement officer, and he's our expert on village ordinances dealing with signage.
Okay. One other question we, we brought up in our, our meeting is the summer feeding programs for the summer program. Is, is there a budget for that type?
Paula can speak to that.
Yeah. Paula would have to speak on that. I do know that there's government, there's some government programming.
Okay.
And I know that she talked to us last week.
At Cal.
At, at the committee of the whole.
We can follow up tomorrow.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for serving. Thank you.
Mr. Ma, Ms. Ma?
That's it.
All right. Very well. All right. Committee reports. Committee of the whole.
Okay.
Was that Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Okay. We had a very, very...
Hold on. Hold on.
Catch her.
I can see, hold on.
I'm ready.
Okay. Been a long meeting for Committee of the Whole.
Highlights.
We...
Highlights.
Highlights. Okay. That's my ball so good. Thank you. Okay. We discussed many things, but one of the main things, there's a lot of good things going on in Woodline. We have a generator project for this building here, and Mr. Engel is going to have to rebid the contract. He and the village manager are thinking about rebidding the contract because it's taking so long and delays still, as a result, I guess, of the pandemic and the short, and a smaller workforce. We also talked to, we're having Juneteenth, we had a great Juneteenth last year, and we're going to have another one this year with the same group, Call a Play, is AAU group that are sponsoring this. The village will be given thirty-five thousand dollars for, to host this event. Call and Play is including all the other money. Out of that thirty-five thousand, twenty-seven would go to operations and expenses, and eight thousand would go for our public safety and our public works as well, that'll be working within, within the festivity. We, Mrs. Brown, Ms. Brown and Ms. Chandler were concerned that the village was allowing the whole, excuse me, Call and Play, to take a lot of the proceeds, and they wanted to try to do some things, sell some drinks, sell some T-shirts, so that we could bring in some proceeds ourselves. At this point, I'm not sure if we totally settled with Call a Play, or how this is going to work, but if we give the event, which I think we are, they will have parking, well, allegedly, we're going to have parking passes for the first so many people that would come to the municipal building to pick them up, because called...
Residents.
For the residents only, because parking is supposed to cost like ten dollars. I'm not sure if that's settled, but look out for the, or we'll be sending it out by cold red, I don't know, by mail, or however, or letting you know that there may be these passes. We talked about that a lot, and we talked about the fire department's doing its usual great job. They've gotten some technology grants that have been coming in, and the fire chief is all about and around the city, going to the schools and recruiting. We have a good volunteer program. The police department, we're doing great things, and they also have some grand... and they also have some grants, they'll be talking about it today and things that they're doing. Uh, interim chief Kevin Williams is doing a great job, a- as usual. Our fire department and our police department are the best in the nation. So, and, and we thank you for that. A lot of great things, but my boss told me to keep it short. Let me see, and new business. We went back in and started talking about the, uh, strategic plan for the Call and Play in Juneteenth. As you know, we're all kinda nervous today. Uh, we've got a pandemic of craziness going on now. Uh, uh, when you think about mass shootings and everything. So we're trying to keep you safe as possible, everybody, myself and everybody. We don't wanna just cancel it, well, if I had my choice, we would, but we don't wanna just cancel it. We gotta try to keep going, but we're really, really working hard on giving a, uh, uh, Juneteenth where, uh, Family Day and keeping it as safe as possible. So we're doing a lot of good things here.
Any questions for Miss Boyd and committee of the whole? Very well, finance, Miss Fitzgerald?
Yes, um, finance committee met on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three at six, um, six twenty P M. Members, myself as the chair, Esther Boyd as co-chair, and Cindy Chandler. Also present was the mayor pool, uh, Rosemary Brown, Tim Ingle, and, uh, Mister Turley. Um, I'll give you the income tax update. The village collected seven hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and three dollars and thirty-six cents for the month of January twenty twenty-three. Um, it was divided and distributed as, as follows. General fund, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two forty-one, twenty-nine. The road tax, ninety-three thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, the debt, uh, thirty-three thousand, four ninety-eight, ninety-four, and capital projects, eighteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents, for a total of the seven hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and three thousand, thirty-six cents I just mentioned. Um, the road tax receipts and disbursements, so since inception of twenty nineteen, we have brought in a total of three million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. We've dispersed since twenty nineteen, um, to twenty twenty-three, one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. And our fund balance for the road fund is two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And as you know, there's gonna be lots of barrels up this, uh, spring and summer, um, and we will be, um, dispersing this money, uh, to complete a lot of roads within the village of Woodline. Um, that's gonna be it that I'm gonna talk about, 'cause I'm gonna leave this up to our finance director, who will give his, uh, report, um, shortly after.
Very well.
Thank you.
Alright, municipal managers' report.
Honorable mayor, members of council. Uh, Juneteenth, the MOU has gone to our law director. Uh, she is currently drafting that, and as soon as she completes that MOU, I will present it to council, uh, for council's approval. Uh, once I sign it, then we can move ahead with planning, uh, the, uh, the Juneteenth celebration with Call to Play. Uh, we will also have committee meetings, regular meetings, of planning meetings so that you all will be kept abreast of all the developments as we approach that date. As mentioned in the finance report, Ronnie Road and Woodstock, you are going to, uh, night vote on, uh, using Fred A. Neiman, the company, to contract, uh, to do that work. Uh, as soon as that, uh, legislation is received, I'll be able to reach out to them to schedule a pre-construction meeting. We know that, uh, we have money from Sorda for Springfield Pike sidewalk and Greenwich Way improvements. Uh, there's actually going to be a signing meeting that I will be attending in March. Uh, and then, once we, uh, have that, uh, contract and the council votes on that, also we'll have a pre-construction meeting as well. The sunshades for the village pool have been ordered, and, uh, Miss Sherman is, uh, working with a vendor and will be sure to have those, uh, in operation and installed before the pool opens on May twenty-seventh. I had a meeting with, uh, Sorda and the residents from Marion Road. I don't know if you've noticed, but the bus has recently changed its route to go down Marion Road, uh, which has caused some problems because Marion is a smaller street, uh, and it has been, uh, disturbing the residents, uh, even at night, uh, with the bus announcements. Sorda has graciously, uh, agreed to move that route, uh, to go down Wayne Avenue. So thanks to Sorda, thanks to the residents who brought that to our attention. Uh, the bus route will be, uh, changed, and they will no longer have to deal with the problem of buses going down Marion Road. I talked to C T consultants about the ripples in Riddle Road, and they are working on a cost estimate to repair them, but the firm feels that the only way to actually make sure that this repair works is to replace the asphalt with concrete. So when I get a cost on that, I will definitely relay that to council. I want to, uh, give a shout out to-
Answer. Ms. Rosemary, have a question.
I'm sorry, the ripples on Riddle Road, they go west and east.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, I wanna think that there may be some going up west, a little further. So are they going to survey the whole street?
No, they were just primarily dealing with the intersection at Woodlawn Boulevard and Riddle Road. So that stop section where those riddles are really extreme.
Okay.
You're saying when you're going down?
East and west.
Yes.
It's east and west.
What did I say?
Yes, you said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you said you thought it was further up, going up Riddle?
There's some going up Riddle Road, I was thinking. And I was just wondering if they were going to, when they were out looking, if they were going to look at this already closely.
I can ask them to look at it.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, that, that's no problem, they'll be out there anyway.
Okay.
Very well, okay.
Uh, the Public Works facility, we, uh, Hamilton County Health Department came, and they stated that we're in violation because we had a bunch of barrels of hazardous chemicals there that had been stored for years. And I just wanna give a shout out to, uh, not only, uh, our director, uh, but also, uh, the, uh, assistant director, and then, actually, uh, Tanya Perkins, who works in police. They got together, they found a vendor, and all of that has been taken out. So right now, we are in compliance, uh, at Public Works, and we continue, uh, to maintain that as a facility and bring it up to standard so that we can pursue excellence in the village of Woodline.
Excuse me, Tanya Perkins works for, um, works for Public Works?
No, 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 no.
P D.
She, she was doing Miss, uh, and, and you'll see it, she was doing Miss Victoria Banks a favor in, uh, just coordinating that removal.
Oh, oh, that, that's the same Tanya in the-
Yeah, she's, she's a police guard.
I didn't know we got, we got any person.
No. Alright, uh, the business window coverings, now I wanna give this shout out to Mister Leroy Williams, who found this one. Uh, evidently, for signs in a non-residential district, they can cover no more than thirty percent of the window area. So he is going to visit, uh, any, uh, commercial business that does not conform to this ordinance and be sure that the ordinance is followed. So, uh, that was a good catch for Mister Leroy Williams.
Great.
Uh, and then we met with the Ohio National Guard, and I asked them the question why the staff, the, uh, flags were always at half-staff. They have a lot of, they lose a lot of military and training accidents and things like that. Now, the, uh, captain told me, or I guess it was the sergeant, said that if the American flag is at half-staff, nothing can fly higher than that. So it's the American flag, the P O A flag, the state flag, and then any local jurisdiction.
Correct.
So as long as they keep the American flag at half-staff, every other flag on the, the mast that's, that's displayed with it must also be displayed at half-staff. So they cleared that.
Correct.
Well, no problem.
Thank you.
Um, I have included in, in your appendix, um, the things that I have referenced, whether they be contracts and also the reports from the various departments. And, uh, with that, I'm gonna conclude the village manager's report, unless council has any other questions they'd like to ask.
Any questions for the manager?
Oh, yes, sir.
With regards to Metro now going up Wayne, is there restrictions on the axle because we don't allow dump trucks or anything heavier than that to travel on Wayne Avenue? So is there a restriction with the signage? Does Metro qualify, or do any changes to signage? Because, uh, when they, they used to back up on the highway and trucks would come that way, or they would go up the hill, and there are signage posters saying, "No trucks up the hill".
Okay, I can check with, uh, ODOT and, and see what the weight restrictions are, and also, uh, you know, how much a bus weighs, that's no problem.
Just was wondering, that was something that we need to-
Could be, could be.
Yeah, because Marion, to me, would even be less-
Less, correct, correct.
But yeah, I can check on that, that's no problem.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would like to know about the progress on the Woodline website. Uh, how is it coming along? Are we good to go with the brand-new one?
Uh, we are working as quickly as possible. The, the staff that we have, like I said, they're busy, uh, and we plan to launch it early spring.
Okay, alright. Finance director's report.
Uh, so I had to pick up where Mister Fitzgerald was called. Uh, during our finance committee meeting, I would review appropriations and revenue reports. Uh, currently, the village has collected eight percent of budget and revenue, and extended nine percent appropriations. I'll review receipts and expense reports, uh, as of January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, for the month of January, the village collected seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars in various expense. And dispersed one million, three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and six cents. Additional spending during January, threw in one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and six cents related to property, uh, thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars related to demolition projects, uh, fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and six cents related to debt payments, uh, and additional payments related to Ohio Police and Fire Foundation Fund of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars in various expense. Uh, general fund disbursements were in line with village disbursements, but the general fund dispersed nine percent of general fund budgetary expenditure and collected eight percent of total general fund budget receipts. Uh, fund balance reports were included, uh, in the committee packets. The bank reconciliation was not presented at finance committee because we could not post a bank reconciliation until we, uh, submitted the twenty twenty-two financial statements to State of Ohio, uh, because of how the U A N software system works. We did submit those financial statements this week. The bank reconciliation reports were in your council mailboxes, along with both the Village of Woodline financial statements, as well as the, uh, Woodline Special Improvement District financial statements, uh, which related to the improvements on Harwood Drive. Uh, overtime reports and salary expense, uh, reports were, uh, discussed, as well as recreation encumbrage receipts, uh, and some legislation that we'll be on the floor tonight for approval. I would imagine that they have any other, uh, finance committee arriving to support that, uh, financial statement.
Pam. Anybody have any questions for the finance director? Pam, Pam? Uh, no, I need, you need to approve your, um, bank reconciliation receipt listing and payment listing.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the bank reconciliation receipt listing and payment listing.
I'll second the motion.
All ayes?
Aye.
Very well.
Ma'am, may I ask for an approval of the twenty twenty-two Village of Woodline financial statements as well as the Woodline S I D financial statements?
Financial statements and S I D?
S I D special.
Cast that, Miss Fitzgerald.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial statements and the special, the S I D statements.
For twenty-
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two.
Very well.
I'll second it.
You'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Law directors' report.
Uh, the only thing is, I'd, I'd like to have an executive session this evening, uh, to discuss pending litigation.
Very well.
Alright, at this time, mayor?
Mayor.
We'll do it.
Go ahead.
You can do it at the end.
Oh, okay.
Catch up, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, yes.
In the manager's report, the swimming pool management agreement, I see this agreement, did we pass what legislation for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Just refresh me, thank you.
You were out that day.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
I'm ready.
Mayor's report, I don't have any, uh, lot on the mayor's report tonight. The only thing that I have, again, I'm gonna, um, sound like the broken record. I'm seeing it over and over on a daily basis. Our speeding in this village, our police cannot be everywhere all the time. So I'd just like to put it out on the public that we please be careful of our kids that are out on these corners in the morning. Daylight saving time is coming, so that helps a little bit. But those little precious, um, precious little young folk out there on those corners out there, it's very important that we be very cognizant of their safety out there. Um, it's not a day that does not go past where I'm just seeing people in the morning just speeding through the neighborhood. Um, interim, you have done an excellent job, uh, kinda setting that tone, following what was set in, in place for that. We'll continue to do that, but again, we can't be in all places all times. So I'm just saying publicly to the, to the public out there, just slow it down a little bit. They just driving just crazy in the morning. Other than that, that's all that I have for the, um, mayor's report. Uh, Vice Mayor, can you please give an approval for my mo- uh, monthly mayor's report statement, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's monthly statement of eleven thousand, nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Legislation?
First item is ordinance number zero six, two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance amending appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I need a motion for, I need to suspend the rules. A motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number zero six, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number zero six, twenty twenty-three.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the suspension, please.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Tillman?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number zero six, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion, a motion for passage of ordinance number zero six, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
That was Cindy, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And that was Robert Lawson? Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Tillman?
Next item is ordinance number zero seven, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance to advance up to five thousand dollars from the general fund to the fire hydrant fund.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number zero seven, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number seven, twenty, for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the suspension, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Very well, I need a motion for passage of ordinance number zero seven, twenty twenty-three?
I'll, go ahead. Make a motion for passage of ordinance number zero seven, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Next item is resolution zero four, twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with Gordian for the construction of a new salt dome.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number zero four, twenty twenty-three?
Make a motion for passage of resolution zero four, twenty twenty-three?
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
Yeah, Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Very well.
The next item is resolution zero five, twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with Fred A. Newman Company for the Ronnie Road and Woodstock Drive Improvements Project.
I will make the monthly call, I'm sorry.
I need a motion, I need a motion for passage of resolution zero five, twenty twenty-three? I need a motion, I need a motion for passage of resolution 05-2023.
I will make a motion for passage of resolution number 05-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Erin Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rose May Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
The next item is resolution 06-2023, a resolution adopting a 2023 policy priorities, I'm sorry, a resolution adopting 2023 policy priorities for the village of Woodline.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number 06-2023.
I'll make a, a motion for passage of resolution number 06-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Erin Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rose May Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
The last item is resolution 07-2023, a resolution strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number 07-2023.
I'll make a motion for passage of resolution number 07-2023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moving properly, second, roll call on the passage, please.
Erin Tillman?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rose May Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Any new business? Very well.
I don't know if you want to make these announcements, sir, but the fire department has a fish fry.
Let me see.
You pass me that.
Sure.
Also, we're looking for volunteers. Coming up soon, we'll post it on the website for cleaning out some of the Woodline area from the honey circle and Springfield Pike, some of the cleanup, cleanup things. So we'll post it on the website and make an announcement. It's coming up soon.
Okay, so we're looking at volunteers for the cleanup. Looks like that the Fish Fry Fridays is going to begin, one, two, three, four of them, one, two, three of them, March 24th, March 31st, and April 7th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And this is down at the Pike and Bar Grill, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. All right. And the benefits, the benefit is, will go to the Woodline Firefighters Association. That's what the benefit goes for, for that as well. And we'll have more to come on the cleanup part, very well.
It says support mental health, is it to support mental health awareness? Is that it?
Yes, support.
That's just something else they throw in.
Correct. Yeah, okay, all right. All right.
And then we just need an executive session under section 220-01-G3 of the code of ordinances to discuss pending litigation.
Is that, if I want to add to that, is that under the same number?
No.
A pending public employee I would like to discuss?
That would be under G1.
G1.
So I, do I make a motion?
The motion would be under both sections.
Do I need to say, say that?
So I can say it for the record. It would be a motion to adjourn into executive session under section 220-01-G3 of the Village of Woodline code ordinances to discuss pending litigation, and section 220-01-G1 to discuss the employment of a public employee, is that correct?
That's correct.
Got it.
And you have for the motion, is that what you?
Yes.
Okay.
So someone said you say it's just moved.
Yes, so moved. I was listening over there.
Roll call.
Wait, who is her second?
You need a second?
So do we get a, did we get a motion, so Pam?
Did she move it?
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Did you move it?
Motion, okay.
Did you move it, Pam?
Yeah. So moved, second.
So then you have the second.
I second, yes.
And we need a roll call on that.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rose May Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?